But I would say that the specials that were made available by way of those grant funds in the other phases don't represent market rate.
Yeah, it's not a fair comparison.
That was kind of a grant subsidized special assessment amount.
Have we had any that we've approved recently to be this high for a lot?
Not for a while.
It just seems like a higher number than I remember most of these.
I don't know that we have approved many for a lot in general.
We haven't had many. River Trail was the last one, and it was also kind of the last. The infrastructure was mostly there. They already had a detention pond there, so you have to kind of look at them individually. But that was kind of an, I wouldn't say infill, but it was kind of a hole that had not been developed. And so a lot of the infrastructure was actually there at the time, and they just had to build the streets and the sewer and water, too. So those were in the twenties, from what I remember, for the assessments. So that was a pretty good rate as well at the time. But normally, a new subdivision, if you're just going out and doing something like this, thirty is not uncommon. Stone Lake, you know, six or eight years ago, was in the thirties to forties. Grand Prairie has been, I can't remember, it was a little higher. What was that? I can't remember Grand Prairie. We just recently, I can't remember if it's come up lately or not, because it has been higher as well.
And the River Trail example was a seventy-five, twenty-five.
Oh, that's right.
So the special assessments only represented seventy-five percent of that total infrastructure cost. Presumably, the other twenty-five was fronted by the developer and passed through on the lot price rather than the special assessment. So it's kind of hard to get an apples-to-apples comparison, given our history of moving around in terms of our special assessment policy and approach.
I think Grand Prairie was over thirty.
It was, because it also had a phase where it was assessed ten years ago for some sewer and water extensions that got applied to some lots that weren't buildable. And then we built the streets and the other facilities to make them buildable. So then you added that to the assessment they already had, so that was, they were definitely over thirty. When we last reported on October 1st, we are keeping track of this now so that we can report that out. I was going to see what we said at the time.
Yeah, I think we reported a five-year average.
Yeah, what was our five-year average?
(inaudible).
Nineteen-eight-sixty-six. There it is, yep.
(inaudible).
Yeah.
(inaudible).
Yeah, that's correct. Had some partial fundings, and we haven't done very many of them, a hundred percent like this for the, since before, five years ago.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this, the applicant?
Mayor and Commissioners, Todd Welsh, three hundred South Ninth. I don't know what quite address to use here, but we'll use that one today. I'd like to thank you again for your time. Appreciate Wayne and city staff putting these numbers together. The only reason I really came to talk today is when I met with Wayne or Wayne presented me these numbers, they also concerned me that they were thirty-five thousand. We have to do a preliminary engineering study when we fill out the new application for the new special assessments. I'm going to go with the gentleman from Call Valley. It's either Justin or Jason, and I don't remember who, but Justin. So Justin at Call Valley came up with around four hundred and some change, call it four-thirty for our original engineering, which made it about twenty-six thousand dollars a lot, which sounds more in line of what we've had in the past. When I met with Wayne in passing, when I was up in the Building Services Department, he gave me the number, and I said, "Gosh, Wayne, that doesn't sound right." And he goes, "Well, I've got a fifteen percent contingency, and I've got this, and I've got that, and it wouldn't really," you know, nothing. Well, fifteen percent on five-hundred thousand, seventy-five grand divided by seventeen lots is by forty-eight-hundred bucks. So now all of a sudden, we go from thirty-four to thirty. I will share with you a couple of things. We were talking about the workforce housing project. If you can remember back on that, and I'm using numbers roughly off my head, the original bid for that was around nine-hundred thousand is what Peter Earls at the time had projected. The engineering from, and again, Wayne, I'm sure does a great job, and he has to use all his factors, was like one-point-two million, and we got the project done for like four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. And two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that was the grant given to us by HUD, which made those special assessments in that project sixty-four-hundred dollars per lot, which we'll never see again. And that's why that was such a great project for sixty-four-hundred dollars, where now you're seeing they should have been twenty-six or twenty-seven. But that HUD grant moved the pump station and then bought some of the special assessments down to get that done. I am hoping that this doesn't come in around the five-hundred-something thousand. I hope we send it out for bid. I know that there are three or four people that have contacted me ready to bid this project, and I hope we get it somewhere down in that four-thirty range so that we can be in that twenty-three to twenty-six thousand dollars for special assessments. As the developer, again, I bring to you, as it does look like I'm asking for a hundred percent, but inside this project, not only do I have to pay for the engineering, I have to donate a lot for detention pond, which is about a thirty-five-thousand-dollar lot that I'm giving up, and I'm going to write a check somewhere around, I think Dean has shared with me, that I'll write a check for around thirty-thousand dollars to deed that over to the city so that they can maintain that detention pond. So again, it's not like I'm getting scot-free out of here. So I may have about a hundred, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars out of my own pocket to put the project together, as well as I have to keep the special assessments current at about two grand a year. So times seventeen, that's where the developer has to have some cash flow to get that in. I am willing to put up the twenty percent line of credit from the bank, and hopefully the project moves forward and the bids come in accordingly. So have answered any of the questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else like to address this item? Not, we'll bring it up here for action. Is there a motion for the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We pass resolution number eighteen-dash-seven-six-one-nine.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven-ten passes four-oh. We're ready for seven-eleven.
Item seven-eleven, resolution number one-eight-dash-seven-six-two-one, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with SCS engineers to provide environmental engineering services to complete design work for landfill cell twenty.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is before you two authorize an agreement with SCS engineers to complete the design work for the next cell we will be constructing at the landfill, cell number twenty. SCS engineers is currently our contracted landfill engineering consultant. The first fifty percent of all landfill design for the city of Salina has already been completed with the 2013 master plan. This design would allow for the finalization of the final fifty percent of those plans to be completed. This schedule is in keeping with us being able to begin construction of the new cell in 2019, and then allowing for approximately one year to fluff that cell in with trash before we close down the current cell that we are using, cell number nineteen, and begin using cell twenty full service, full service, excuse me. The, the design includes pre-design planning and borrow soil testing, design and construction document preparation, and bidding assistance when we are ready to go out to bid for construction of cell twenty. This is a single-source purchase with SCS engineers as our landfill engineering consultant, to be paid from already approved 2018 to 2022 CIP funds under resolution seventeen-seventy-five-oh-five that was approved December eleventh, 2017. The project cost is fifty-five thousand dollars, and there is a five-thousand-dollar contingency that we are requesting, and that primarily is through our experience having to go back and deal with questions, comments, and design changes at the KDHE. The, the recommended action for this is to authorize the agreement with SCS engineers to complete the design work for cell twenty in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars with a five-thousand-dollar contingency for a total of sixty thousand dollars, or reject the agreement and provide staff with further direction. I stand for questions.
Questions?
I have a dumb one. What's, what's fluff?
Fluff is all the hard, sharp, and heavy items are pulled out of the waste. We only put soft trash, trash that will not tear the geomembrane liners that are at the bottom of the cell. So before that cell goes into what we call full service, where everything that comes to the landfill goes in it, we prepare a sort of a cushion layer that just helps protect that, that membrane. These are extremely expensive cells, and we try to do everything we can to preserve them. It is a best, best industry practice, and it's something that we've done at the Salina landfill for a long time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone from the public like to address this item? Bring it back up here for action, please.
Mayor Ryan, I move we approve resolution eighteen-dash-seven-six-twenty-one, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with SCS engineers to provide environmental engineering services to complete design work for cell number twenty in the amount of fifty-five thousand with a five-thousand-dollar contingency.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes four-oh. I'm going to look at the clerk and say, do we need that break?
I actually was going to ask for that, to reach out to a consultant that's traveling for a later agenda item and just check on their, their estimated time of arrival, so that would be beneficial.
We need a changeover of the disc for the television. So we'll take a ten-minute break. We'll be back at six-ten.
We'll be back in session now. Call us back to order. We're ready for development business, 8.1. If the clerk is ready.
8.1, application number PDD 18-1A, requesting a change in zoning district classification from R3, multiple-family residential district to PDD Plan Development District on property addressed as 148 North Oakdale Avenue, 8.1A, first reading ordinance number 18-10987.
Mr. Andrews?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is a rezoning application filed by Jones Gillum Renz Architects on behalf of Blue Beacon International. And the building or site that's the subject of this has been referred to as the Medias Center. And it is a building that was constructed in 1951. It's a three-story building that faces Oakdale Avenue and is addressed off Oakdale Avenue. Majority of the rooms in the center were small dormitory rooms with some office spaces. And the building was historically used as a nurse's residence hall for the Sisters of St. Joseph, who provided medical care at the former St. John's Hospital. They vacated the building in 2004, and it has primarily been vacant since that time. The property, meaning the entire block, which comprised what was referred to as the Penn Campus, was purchased by Salina Regional Health Center in 2005. After there was a denial of a demolition permit for the former St. John's Hospital, the hospital sold the property to Sunflower St. John's LLC. Again, they purchased the entire block. And then in 2016, the block was split, and this allowed Blue Beacon International to acquire the northwest corner, which includes the Medias Center building. And Blue Beacon is looking to meet an unmet housing need by renovating the building to create transitional housing units and administrative office space for social service agencies. So this is a conversion of an existing building into multifamily housing, administrative office space, and a small retail store. And there are also some issues dealing with non-conforming setbacks. So staff looked at this. They felt that a planned development district, which would be a customized zoning district to accommodate the unique qualities of this mixed-use development, was the best tool. And so there's three proposed uses: dormitory-style transitional housing, administrative office space, and a small retail space, all mixed into this building. In addition, they have requested a reduction in required off-street parking, from 29 spaces to 25 off-street parking spaces. And the existing building is non-conforming as to setbacks, both on Oakdale and Ash Street. And so they're requesting a reduction in required front yard setback. With the approval of a planned development district, should this building be damaged in the future, they would be allowed to build back at those setbacks because the planned development district would make those conforming. So the R3 district, which is what this is zoned presently, doesn't allow office area to exceed more than 2,000 square feet. And they're going to have about 5,400 square feet of office space in this building. So the planned development district would accommodate that. Historically, if you look at how this building's been used and the surrounding uses, I don't think anybody's going to recognize any kind of noticeable change from the use of the building. It's going to be similar to the historic use, and it's going to be similar to what's across the street at the Donovanir Children's Center, which is also a planned development district. Planning Commission reviewed this application and found that they were unanimously in support of the zoning change and with the two modifications that were requested by the applicant. And so they didn't find that the plan would produce any noticeable changes to the exterior of the building and that the changes in use were not significant, would not negatively impact the neighborhood. So this comes to you with the unanimous recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission, subject to the conditions that are identified in the report, and approving the two modifications: a reduction in parking and a reduction in building setback. So the ordinance that's before you's been prepared based on the Planning Commission's recommendation. And if you concur with that, the attached ordinance should be approved on first reading with second reading scheduled to occur on the 19th of November. If you have any specific questions about the property or project, I'd be happy to address them.
Questions?
Just with regard to the parking, since it'd be offices and retail, was the request to go from 29 to 25 off-street spaces based solely on the fact that there currently just 25 spaces there already?
No, it was based on the fact that we require a facility like this to provide one off-street parking space per occupant, and they have eight apartment units. And what they've indicated to us is that the residents who will be there will not have cars of their own. And so the request to reduce the required amount of parking was based on the fact that the residents who reside there will not have their own vehicles.
Okay, because adding, I guess, page seven. Thank you. The, under Parking Access, the third paragraph, the arithmetic made sense when it just looked like the... even allowing for that, the number that I came up with was 29. And they requested to drop it to 25, and looked like an allowance had already been made for the reduced number of occupants who would have cars. I think it's a deal break. I was just...
Yeah, that calculation of 29 was based on requiring one parking space for all eight sleeping rooms.
So that was without any reduction for that?
That was without any reduction. And what they requested is to have one parking space for every two sleeping rooms, and that resulted in a reduction of four, which I don't know if... I mean, I don't believe it was a coincidence, but the request was to have the 25 stalls. The other thing I would note is that the retail store, while it's, can be classified as a retail store, is really for the residents who live there. And the goal is for people to transition out of this facility and get places of their own. And so the retail store is really for the residents to get items that would help them set up their own apartment or living space. So it's not going to have a typical retail customer base. It's primarily targeted towards the people who reside there.
I don't know if it's germane to our task here today or if I just missed it. Who would be operating the transitional housing?
It's going to be a combination of social services agencies that Blue Beacon is going to work with, and then Blue Beacon will eventually turn it over to them.
Other questions? Thank you. Mr. Andrews? Anyone from the public like to address this item?
Good afternoon. John Blanchard, 1117 State Street. Just standing in support of this project. As you know, back in 2014, perhaps it was, part of the staff report there was in an effort to retain the historic portion of St. John's Hospital that also included the Medias Center. And just a question in a quick, maybe flashback. If I recall correctly, wasn't the Health Department... Didn't the Health Department meet in the Medias Center at some point? So there has been some...
It lived there for about a year, year and a half.
Okay. So that has had a little bit of use, but my recollection is that it's a building that's very, in very good shape. It's very encouraging that it's being reused, that this type of adaptive reuse and redevelopment, along with infill, is important. And I think that along with Donna Caveaner, if we can get St. John's going, I think it helps to really move that neighborhood forward. As far as the parking goes, a lot of the parking minimums sometimes are a little tricky, and it has to do a lot with what neighborhood you're in. I wouldn't be so concerned about that area, not just because the... And I'm assuming that it's all off-street parking. But on-street parking in that area is probably adequate as well because that is a neighborhood where you've got Save-A-Lot there. You've got, you know, it's great for young people that are just starting out, also for empty nesters. It's a great neighborhood for those who wish to age in place. Hopefully, that's what that neighborhood will transition to. So sometimes, you know, the parking minimums sometimes are not that important. I would encourage you to see the benefits in this. Looks like the Planning Commission did. Looks like you guys will probably move on this. But also, maybe encourage more of this type of activity and adaptive reuse in other parts of the community as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Bring it back up here for discussion or action. Is there a motion for this item?
Yes, I move to approve ordinance number 18-10987 on first reading.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes 4-0. 8.2.
Item 8.2, authorize the award of construction contract for the Community Development Block Grant, Commercial Rehabilitation of the Salina Office Station at 356 North Santa Fe.
Who has this one? Mr. Iskell, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. As noted by the clerk, today we're here to authorize or consider authorizing the award of construction contract for the Community Development Block Grant that the city, Salina Office Station, Beaverley Architecture, has been working with, and North Central Regional Planning Commission have been working to move forward in this process. The building addressed through this commercial rehabilitation is the former Missouri Pacific Train Depot located at 365 North Santa Fe. The bid must be awarded to the lowest qualified bidder. Just as a reminder, we've been working on this about a year. In November, actually, of 2017, the body agreed to submit an application for this CDBG project. That was approved. And we finalized a grant agreement with Department of Commerce in February of 2018. Since then, a variety of preliminary work, planning, and environmental work has been done and getting us to the point where a bid, or I should say, a scope of services had been published, advertised as according to CDBG regulations. And with that, on October 30th of 2018, bids were received by that date and opened here at City Hall with both Salina Office Station members here and Nicole McDaniel from North Central Regional Planning Commission. You'll see in your packet, there is a bid tabulation sheet. It's probably the easiest to follow through as we go through this. And before we get into contract names, I'd just like to remind the body and those listening at home that the overall project budget for this is $340,363, with $90,363 of that total project budget coming from the owners of the building, which is Salina Office Station LLC. The rest is from CDBG funds. And it's the responsibility of the body that when we spend money from the CDBG funds for contractors, that the body approves that contract. Of the contracts submitted, we had five total from Cheney Construction, Harbin Construction LLC, Ponton Construction, Ryco Inc., and Trinium Inc. Of the add alternates, and you can see on the bid tabulation sheet what was also part of the scoring. So as far as materials needing to be submitted, bid bond, base bid, and then the alternatives following that. Of those alternatives, Alternum 3, 4, and 7 were removed from the total bid process after being looked at by Salina Office Station. And Ryco Inc. submitted the lowest bid of $307,443, with the next lowest bid by Ponton Construction at $307,554.89, for a difference of $111.89. The bids were both reviewed, were opened with all but one of the contractors in attendance and read aloud. So everybody, for transparency's sake, heard what those numbers were, questions were able to be asked or clarifications through that process. Everything was then reviewed following that meeting, again, by North Central Regional Planning Commission, Salina Office Station LLC representatives, the project architect, Warren Etiger, and city staff. As far as fiscal note, the city has no fiscal impact in this. It's just grant funds and the Salina Office Station LLC's dollars in play. It conforms, as we've discussed in numerous blue sheets, with the city's strategic plan and our vision statement for recognizing historical components and remaining a thriving and vibrant place to live. And staff recommendation for the following options. And it's option number one, to approve and award the construction contract for rehabilitation of Salina Office Station to Ryco Inc. in the amount of $307,443, as described in the bid tabulation sheet attached. If the body chooses not to do that, option two is to propose an alternative bid award option, and three is to decline the award and not award any bid at this time. I am available for questions. And I believe both North Central Regional Planning Commission representatives are here and Salina Office Station LLC.
What is the repercussions if we don't accept the first bid and we go with the local bid?
Well, CDBG, and if Nicole wants to speak to this more, but CDBG says find the lowest bidder. And it sets up the qualifications for what are those minimums. And I think knowing that the bids were all so tight, like if you look at all five of them, there's none that are like way out here. I mean, they're all pretty close, which means those numbers are really relevant, whether you, you know, are right here in the city or somewhere nearby. I don't know about ramifications if Nicole wants to touch on that.
I guess if the risk of offending our county commissioners, the other company is in the county. This company is in the county. But I had the same question, but, okay.
Other questions for staff? Mr. Beaverley?
My name is Ken Beaverley. I'm a partner in the Salina Office Station. My brother and I and another architect are moving our offices there. We picked the most responsive bidder, and he's from Brookville, and that's really local. Darben Dent, Ryco, they do a lot of work here in Salina. Ponton Construction was the next bidder. You know, I'm glad I'm not in his shoes. I would be disappointed. He missed it by $111. But we feel very good about both bids. We feel good about Ryco being the low bidder. And we would strongly recommend that we go with them based on what the city or the state of Kansas would require, so. And I'd be glad to answer any questions about the building, if you have any.
Well, I bet when they opened the bids, there was a collective groan from a couple. Any questions for Mr. Beaverley? Thank you very much. Anyone from the public like to address this item? Bring it back up here for action.
Mayor Ryan, I move we approve the award of the construction contract for rehabilitation of the Salina Office Station to Ryco Inc. in the amount of $307,443,000, as described in the bid tabulation sheet.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes. Other business, we have a request for executive session, but is there... Do we need some input from staff on that first request there?
Yeah, I think it's another business item. You might want to discuss the alternate approach in terms of dates. I don't know if staff has more information.
Yes, I believe Ms. Fisher is probably best prepared.
8.3, yes.
Yeah, 8.3.
That was up there for the peasant bridge item.
I wondered if it looked familiar. Did we skip?
That is supporting...
Information, 8.3, I covered first. It was the staff report. There was nobody really...
Yeah, I thought we already did.
That was from 10-7. All right, then, if we're ready for 9.1, then we'll take that up.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. In light of brief discussion earlier today before the study session, the mass amount of information that you received in your packet Thursday night, a little bit of feedback on needing additional time to review and prepare going into discussion with Art Davis, our consultant with Springstead Waters. The tentative game plan was to reach out for alternative dates to see if he could come back at a relatively close time. He did propose next Tuesday, the 13th, at 2:00. He said that would work perfect. But then asked that I check with you to see if... I guess it would be setting a special meeting to take up that executive session at that time.
Is there an agreeable time for all of you, the 13th to Tuesday?
Yes, and he is estimating about 90 minutes.
Okay, very good. Do we need action on that, or we just agree?
It'd be my recommendation that you go ahead and by motion actually call the special meeting. That would eliminate any of the other processes necessary to do that, if that's all right.
Someone like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we have a special meeting regarding the... with Art Davis to discuss the qualifications for the position of city manager on 11/13 at 2:00.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That item passes 4-0.
Mayor, if I may, I might clarify that my reference to the process has had only to do with the process at your level. Certainly, all of the notification and everything associated with a special meeting will be completed as normally.
Yes, but we'll be in executive session with Mr. Davis.
Right. It will be convened as an open special meeting, even though you would anticipate going directly into an executive session.
Okay, thank you. 9.2?
I did have a clarification also on that item, if I may, Mayor, before the motion is read. I hope everyone has found our inclusion of the motions in the agenda as helpful and seems to have been well-received. The only point that I needed to make in this case, you'll see reference to the non-elected employees referred to with a plural possessive. That was in anticipation of the potential of that discussion relating to employees, plural. But in preparation of the motion, the singular Article A appeared in that motion. So we had a grammatical clash between the "a" and the plural possessive. The motion, as it would be read, should be read without the "a." And certainly want to make the point that, as I'm sure you all are aware, the interest that is being protected in that closed type of discussion has to do with the privacy interests of the employee or employees involved in the discussion. So the discussion can't relate to groups of employees generally. So just want to make sure that everybody knows that you understand that, that even though it is plural, it still must relate to specific individual employees, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
You mean employees that are involved in this discussion that we're talking about?
Yes, yes. The point is, it still relates to, as the motion is stated. Just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any confusion as a result of that grammatical clash the way it appeared on the agenda.
And I believe we're going to try 10 minutes to start with.
Yeah, my suggestion would be a shortened duration at times for you to confirm whether you wish to be in executive session for a longer duration.
Mayor Ryan, I move the City Commission recessed into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss non-elected employees' performance based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume in this room at 6:46.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We don't anticipate any action, do we?
We do not.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.